Okay. Technical difficulties with Zoom?
Lights on.
Please stand by.
Yeah, we're waiting on that. All right, it's six o'clock. We ready with that Zoom?
No, it's not working right now. I'm on the phone with tech support, they're trying to troubleshoot it.
There's been a lot of internet issues in town today.
Yes.
We lost it up our way for a good part of the morning and a couple hours this afternoon.
Where's my phone? To my car.
Does he need to reset it back there maybe?
Probably not him. We may want to just proceed as we have, I mean, we have the public.
We have the public.
Meeting, we have the cable if Zoom comes in a few minutes late.
Yeah. I was just gonna say.
It's not required.
Exactly, it's an extra.
Because the rest of it's recording.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, Zoom is just not required, so.
Yep.
Well, you might want to make that announcement after you do the pledge.
Let's wait one second, here we go.
Oh, look at that. Look at how good those tables look on TV. That's great.
I know.
You might want to go with some bunting like out front, that would look cool too.
I'm told that the planning board will be reconfiguring this.
How lovely.
All right, we're good. All right, good evening, everybody, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, at the Newton Town Hall. I would like to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, real quick, just so everybody out there, as an understanding of what's been going on, we haven't had a full board here for quite a few meetings lately. Mr. Conley has been, him and his family have been dealing with.
Recording in progress.
An emergency situation with one of their children, which has required a lot of his wife and his time to be able to handle the workload of the family situation. So he has been on an excused absence to be able to help his family to get through the rough situation that they're dealing with. So along with us, I hope that you all can put them in your prayers and think of them. With that being said, we will move on to board appointments. And the first one is the resignation of the supervisor of the, excuse me, the voter checklist. And I'm gonna have to get hold of a thing for this. So we received a letter from Julie Lemire thanking the town for being able to be of service to the town for the past eight years. She tends on leaving, she wants to, she'll stay on till the end of the year. In her letter, she says, but if anybody out there would like to step up to be the supervisor of the voter checklist, she'd be willing to help train and show anybody the ropes before she leaves or so that she may leave sooner if somebody's out there to be able to take it. But we've received her letter and she's gonna hang around till December 31st, 2023, she said.
It's worth stating too, this is an example of, there's a lot of people, you know, myself included, who step up and volunteer to do things that are very important for the town that are kind of behind the curtain. This is one of those jobs. What I always tell people is it's kind of one of those things you take on and you do it for a while and then you need somebody else to turn it over to. Like you take your turn. So if people are watching this right now and they haven't had their turn yet, so to speak, for any job, we have, we have positions open on pretty much every board, every committee. Please, you know, start with an email, just shoot an email to BOS Secretary and say, "I'm interested" and we can start you off from there. And you don't have to do it for the rest of your life. But, you know, but it's, it's, you know, much appreciated. Julie did a great job in this role. You pretty much saw her every voting day. And I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Supervisor of the Checklist Julie Lemire, effective December 31st, 2023, with regret, thanks, and gratitude.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
The vacancy will go on the website. And as you know, it's an elected position, so appointing, when the board appoints somebody, will have January, February, and March.
Right.
Yeah, and that's another, just quickly, is this is a great opportunity because you can get appointed, try it before you buy it type thing. And if you don't like it, you don't run in March type thing, you know what I mean? So this is, these appointments are a great way to dip your toe in the water.
And like Matt said, we thank Julie for all her experience and support that she has given the town over the course of her eight years. Citizens input. Nobody here in person, anybody on Zoom? All right, we will move on. Administration, tax office has a request for the dog license.
In your package, you should have the cover sheet of the warrant. Actually, it's a letter.
Yep.
Asking you to issue a warrant from the Tom Clerk Collector, Mary Jo Coles, to effective June 1st, under RSA 4046614. You need to authorize the PD and the animal control officer to start issuing civil forfeitures for those who haven't licensed their dog.
Supposedly, there is 289 dogs that are unlicensed as of this point. So if you know anybody or if you're one of those people out there that have a dog and it's not licensed, please do so immediately.
So this is, this is one of those things unfortunately we have to do almost every year. And it's an RSA, so I move in accordance with RSA 46614 to authorize the Newton Police Department and Animal Control to issue a warrant order to the ACO PD authorizing the issuance of civil forfeiture notices to the owners of unlicensed dogs for the current year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. And you got Dan seconded to that, right?
Yep.
Moving forward, Police Department. I thought I saw you back there.
I know you guys just voted on that last thing, I appreciate that. Just for a process, so everyone understands with those civil forfeitures, it is a lot of work. The civil forfeiture requires the Police Department to do paperwork through the court, get you a court date, serve it to you. But before we give you that, we have to go out and serve you the paperwork to tell you you get to register your dog. If you don't do it, then we have to come back again. We're visiting houses two and three, four times sometimes to get people to register their dogs. I think the registration is, I'm gonna say, under $12, I think. It's not very expensive, but it costs us a ton of money to keep running back and forth. Years ago, we used to do it with a certified letter. It would cost us thousands of dollars to send out certified letters at this point. So we serve them in hand, but it is a lot of work. And just so the residents know, we don't want to come out and do them either. So we'd appreciate if you could register them because people get very upset with us that we come out and do it. It's not something that we want to do, so please register your dog.
Is 289 high or low?
289, right now, I think is a low number. Last year or with prior years to COVID, we were around 600 to 700 at some points. So then 289, I can deal with 289 better than 600.
Okay.
I've got a couple of things on the agenda, I don't know which one is first, I think.
Donation bin?
Yep. So there's, we have a resident in town, they own Tiffany's Closet, it's a donation bin. What that bin is, is right now it's sitting up on Highland Street. They're not getting much activity on it up there. The clothing goes to all area towns, Newton residents, and it gets delivered to different people that they collect the stuff. I guess I see a great value in it. I know we have clothing collection bins everywhere. I would like to put it at the PD, somewhere along the side of it, by the mailbox, by the PD, out of the way. I spoke with the owner of the box. I just think that she'd get a little bit more traffic if we can try it there for a little bit. So I'm asking the board's permission to see if we could try that out.
Yeah, I actually, I drove by it the other day and it's kind of obscure a little bit because I, yeah, I just barely caught it out of the corner of my eye and it was, I don't know how long it's been there, but that's.
Month or so.
Yeah, and I, it's the first time I've seen it, so.
Yeah, I just think the activity with the people coming in and out of the PD, right now where we have the meetup spot for people to buy stuff online, you can come to the PD, do it in the parking lot for a safe spot to exchange. I figured something like this would also be helpful. It's going to, you know, good cause, you know, people that are in need of it.
Yeah.
So I'd like to give it a shot and see if it gets some activity there.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Do I have somebody making a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow you to play, to, in accordance with you, the other chief, the road agent, the proper placement of the donation box on the property.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have.
Your vehicle request.
Okay. I brought it up, I think it was two meetings ago. We have an opportunity to purchase a vehicle. The PD is, the board is aware and you guys have been working with me to try to replace it. We were able to locate another police F-150 responder, kind of like the one that we already have. I've also was able to work with the ARPA committee and ARPA has agreed to give us some money. And I'd like to see if we can purchase this out of the, it's a special detail account that is, the revenue that's generated is by the officers doing detail. So it doesn't really have a tax impact, the officers made the money by being out there. So I want to, you know, buy a vehicle from that, that way they're not hitting the taxpayers for it. It's something that's there. And then with the ARPA funds, we should be able to pay for it outright. I have the numbers if you guys don't have them. I was looking to purchase another vehicle.
I think one of the, one of the things in Broken Record Me Again, talking about the financial straits we're in right now, is one of the things we have to realize is the worst thing we could, one of the worst things we could do in a default budget is run old cruisers that are, we're putting good money after bad, right? So if we were to just sit there and say, well, we're in a default budget, we'll just keep these things on the road. Some mechanics might be pretty happy about that, but that's really taking a lot of money out of the small budget we have. So as I say all the time, we need out of the box thinking. This, to me, is out of the box thinking, right? Because we have the special detail account, the chief just told you how that money comes into play and then we have ARPA available. So this is kind of a good news story, I think, because we get a newer cruiser, you're hopefully not going to do much maintenance on a new cruiser, maybe an oil change every now and then.
That's pretty much all it really should.
Yep. And not only that, but we'd also talked about the safety issue of the officers because of the two vehicles that you'd already come before the board about that shouldn't even be being driven and used by the department that need to be put out to pasture. So this is, like Matt said, this is a win-win. So I don't see an issue with it. Did I hear somebody making a motion?
I'd make a motion for the, to direct the police chief to purchase the F-110 police responder unit. Money to be paid from the Detail Fund and ARPA.
The only, I'll second for discussion, the only thing you added in there, it might be a small thing, but you said to have the police chief purchase, which I think is actually not quite correct, it'd be the town.
Probably would say the town of Newton in accordance with the police chief's recommendations.
Okay. I'll give you a second.
Jim?
Just an observation, members of the board, this purchase is not coming out of the default operating budget. It's coming from two different sources. ARPA money, if you support the motion, and the special police detail account. The current balance is about $108,000 in the Detail Account, but we don't have updated balances for May yet. So we're doing a withdrawal later on. So there's more than sufficient money. And again, it's not coming out of the default.
All right. So we said money's coming out of those accounts. That's what I heard Joe say.
Would you like the numbers?
Yeah, if you have, if you have the, does everybody have the proposed motions? Because it's right in the proposed motions.
Now, could you print it a late one? Do you want me to make the motion?
Yep.
Because I can read it.
So let's, let's, if the second doesn't mind, Joe can withdraw his motion?
Yeah, sounds good.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, now we're open.
I move to approve the purchase of a police vehicle from MHQ in the amount of $72,032.43. This vehicle is not coming out of the default operating budget, $36,013.43 from the police special detail account of number 244848 and $36,032 from ARPA funds.
And I'll be a second once again.
Seconded by Matt. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
When do you print this?
Thank you.
She must have just added.
Yes, we do.
All right. Probably a month ago, the board asked me, or I asked the board, we're down one full-time officer. You guys had given me the go-ahead to find a candidate. We're, I'm at the point now where we found a candidate. They've successfully gone through the background check to include a polygraph, psychological, physical fitness, fitness test, health test, and some other testing that we do. The candidate that we had fits the bill for what we need. We were able to do it, as Matt probably would know, this is pretty quick moving. That was one of the things I've been trying to do, is streamline this process a little bit. So I do have a candidate for you that I'd like to, if we can offer him a full-time position with the department that we're there, I can get him into the next academy. The closing date for the academy is coming up, so, and I believe there's only, I think when I looked this morning, there was 11 spots available. So I want to get him into one of those spots.
Nice.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna miss you. Full-time or part-time?
Full-time.
Full-time, okay.
Did you want to read something, Dan?
Sure. I move to appoint Christian King to the position of Police Patrolman contingent upon condition to be established by the police chief.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Run.
All right. Next, Mr. Povero, Staff Reports.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh, was that out loud, I'm sorry.
I couldn't hear it, Matt.
Good evening, Board, Mike Povero, Road Agent.
Hey, Mike.
So, staff report, it's just gonna go right into the health of the Highway Department, Newton Infrastructure. Because I really don't, I have one staff member, so I'll just jump along from there. I'll try to keep it condensed, brief, as we hit topics. If you guys have a question, just jump in and I'll try to either elaborate or clear it up as we get to them. First, just an overall view of the Highway Department. Drastically underfunded. Has been for years, it's not a news bulletin. I do what I can with the funds I have, pretty simple, really. But the funds aren't even remotely close to keep up to the need of what we need to do to keep the infrastructure intact. You guys know this, but I'm saying it for people that may not know this and are watching or will watch it down the road. The road agent position here in town is not paid. I am not a paid road agent. I get no salary, I don't draw a check, I don't get a stipend, I get none of the above. My compensation is rental of my equipment to the town, pretty simple. At some point in time, Newton will have to go through a painful growing spread and will have to develop a highway department, a functional rail highway department, like the abutting towns do. That's gonna be expensive, but you're going to need to do it at some point in time. Don't know when, it's kind of up to the board to find out when you can budget it, start doing phases, something of some means, because we make it work, but we have one highway employee. And I'm gonna break down in a minute how drastically underfunded that is to surrounding towns. We really need, I think bare minimum, three employees here for the Highway Department. And that's just to do highway work. In the past, there's been different selectmen that have brought up, you know, Highway Department should start cutting the grass and the highway supervisor, yeah, okay. It's a great.
Concept.
Yeah, theory. But that's more people, more money, okay? And other towns do it, and it's done, I think efficiently, but it's still money. I'm worried about the roads, I'm not worried about the grass at this stage. The road infrastructure here in the town of Newton, and this is a guesstimate, you can put a pen to paper and come up with different, we're probably, the infrastructure, roads in this town are probably north of $60 million worth of roads. 60 million. I have a budget of $405,000 to maintain $60 million of infrastructure. That's not even, you could do that math, I'll give you a, I'll put this whole room on, what, a whiteboard? You are gonna, that math's not gonna work. And it doesn't work. My paving, which is now the season we're into, my paving right now, this town, Newton, I have a $55,000 paving line item. Comparison to some of the other towns I'm gonna give you. Kingston has 62 miles of road. They have a paving budget this year of $535,000. Now, I gotta recap again in a minute. I'm 405 my whole 12 months. Plastow has 37 miles of road. They have a $1 million budget and they're $225,000 for paving this year. Danville, 38 miles of road, about the same as Plastow. $1 million highway budget, $370,000 for paving this year. Newton, just to recap, I have 52 miles of road and with my highway block grant money, not the line item budget at 55,000, I have $140,000 to pave this year. I'm gonna give you what I've worked up, and this is like bare bones necessity that should be done this year. The only two roads, I mean, the roads go on and on and on. And we have a road evaluation, you can look it up, I won't, residents, they can all look it up. There's a road evaluation, I think the total on that right now is 1.7 million. That 1.7 million dollars are roads that on a road evaluation would get an F. They fail. They're junk. That's 1.6. We're in the tank. The two roads that are beyond an F, I don't know where you'd go with the letters on that scale, but I've got to finish Gale Village Road because that was started five or six years ago. We got shut down because of trees, we're beyond that now. The last section of road is scheduled to be done this year. The other one that should be done is Wentworth. I don't know if you guys have driven down Wentworth? Have you?
Yep.
What's your thoughts on that road?
Should be closed, Chad.
Yeah.
Should be closed.
Should be closed. I have a selectman telling me it should be closed, I can't disagree with you on that. We can't close it. So to do those two roads this year, just those two roads, I need 300. You're gonna go back to the math again, I have 140. Something's not gonna get done. I, I mean, I'll sit down with you guys and we'll pick. I mean, five years I've been trying to get Gale Village done and that's the one I should do, but this one is almost not passable. I, I, you know, that's just, that's just the paving, like immediate right now, need to be working on, get through the season. So this winter, and these are things I think people forget, resident, everybody forgets it. Some people don't know, they don't know to forget it. So I have a $405,000 budget. This year, Trish, Emergency Management, sitting behind me in the back, we had two storms come through this year, this winter. We won the end of December, we had the one end of January. Those two storms cost the Highway Department just under $40,000, 10% of my highway budget. We thought, we, well, we hoped and prayed that it would hit a FEMA threshold and we were gonna get reimbursed for that money. Neither one of them hit a threshold. So that means unanticipated storms that have come out, that there's no line item for in my budget, have to be paid for out of my budget. So I'm in the tank right out of the gate, the first part of the year. No money. I started with no money. I went the wrong way. It's extremely frustrating. I'm going to stand here and tell you, I know what it takes to maintain a road, I know what it takes to build a road, I know what it takes to maintain a highway system. We need to be in the vicinity of the surrounding towns around me that have less miles of road. We should be around $1 million a year for this Highway Department. The residents are frustrated. The roads stink. I can't defend it, but I'm frustrated because I can't repair it and do the general pavement preservation it takes to maintain the roads. I was kind of hoping at some point in time, one of you guys were going to jump in and ask me more. Nothing? No?
Well, I think we're waiting for the exclamation point at the end.
I don't know if there is one. I'm just giving you an overall summary of the Highway Department and the, it almost needs a defibrillator.
The, you know, the thing I'll add is, even if we weren't in a default budget, you'd probably be saying a lot of the same stuff, right?
Yeah, it wouldn't change, it would change a little bit, because my proposed budget last year for this year's operating budget was about $150,000 in an increase. That increase was just to take the sting out of the pavement, cost of pavement went up, cost of salt went up, went through the roof, and other operating expenses that we knew were going to escalate. Try to take in consideration that, so it wasn't as bad, but I didn't even get that.
So, so in other words, when you were sitting down with your pencil, you were like, what I really need is this, but I want to make it palatable for the voters, so I'm going to ask for this.
Exactly.
And they didn't even give you that.
No, exactly right, 100% right.
So, and that's a common theme across many departments, but especially, you know, I always say the big three, and they're all here right now, and they hate it when I call them the big three, but it's the big three departments that cost the most money and probably have the most, like, focus, they're in our face every day, right? This doesn't work. I've been, I've been sitting up here for 10 years, it doesn't work.
It doesn't work, 100% right.
It doesn't work, you know? We're like, we don't, you know, you just went down through all those towns, and we're not even close to what they're doing. And people are going to be, you know, on social media or whatever, they're going to be complaining about the roads, this road isn't that, isn't good, and this road's not that good, and then, oh, by the way, there's still snow. Like, we could get nailed with snow, and that changes the whole equation, right? And then people are going to say, geez, you know, there's an inch and a half of snow on the road, or whatever, and the plows aren't out. Why aren't the plows out? Like, you know, it's like, because this all costs money that we don't have. So I just end it by saying, you know, it doesn't work. And you talk about the growth spurt, you know, I don't know where we stand with the capital improvement plan, but this needs to be part of the capital improvement plan. And people can, you know, vote for it or not, but it's, you know, it's untenable, I guess is the word I'm looking for. Doesn't work.
But you guys drive, you live here in town, you drive the roads in town. Our infrastructure, and everybody's is, I'm no different than Plastow or Kingston or Danville. The infrastructure in this region deteriorates almost faster than you can keep up to it. We're in a region in the country that, listen, sadly, this is the game. Every Highway Department plays it. In the summer, we reconstruct as many roads as we can, so that we can plow them easier in the winter, and Mother Nature destroys them.
The vicious circle.
There's the cycle. So we will never catch up on it, but I would feel a little bit better if I was staying a little bit close to where I am every year, but I'm not. I'm falling farther behind and farther behind and farther behind. And I get a lot, I don't know how many phone calls you guys get, I get a lot of calls from unhappy residents that I haven't gotten to their street, I haven't been to their street in years, I tell them, and then they'll ask me, legitimate question, are you going to get to it this year? No, you're probably not on the list right now, budget, five years, six years, maybe?
At least they're on the list.
Well, they're on the list.
Everybody's on the list.
No, I'm not on the list.
It's a long list.
No list.
Listen, that list that we have as a road evaluation in town that's on the website, that's $1.7 million worth of roads that need to be fixed right now.
It doesn't go down.
Yeah, that's not the ones that are coming up next year.
Doesn't change.
Yeah, exactly.
It doesn't change.
That needs to be fixed right now. That means, based upon my budgetary number, I won't get to that last road for 11 years if another road doesn't start to fall apart, and when they're falling apart now, because I stand here.
So, here, I'll put you on the spot somewhat. Let's just say we give you a million-dollar budget, and the voters approve it.
Yep.
I guess, can you, on the spot, outline what you would do?
With a million dollars?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, in five minutes.
Go ahead.
Yeah. First of all, I wouldn't take all million dollars and spend it in one year. Doesn't benefit you, because you, if I fix a million dollars' worth of road starting tomorrow, those roads will start to fail at the same time. So that means 15, 17, 18 years down the road, those are all starting to fail again. So I need another million dollars in the kitty at that point to rebuild those roads.
Sure.
If you gave me a million, I'd use four. And then next year, I take it the same and use four. And you, so you've got a system of roads being repaired and a system of roads failing at the same time. There is another thought, Jim and I had kicked it around a little bit. It's a big one to swallow, is we go and get a bond. Get a bond, which is done, Jim's actually done it in a town, where you go and get a bond for X amount of money to repair the roads that are in dire deficiency, and then come up with, here's the key, a functional budget number that you can continue to maintain the roads. There's, anybody that's a road agent, Public Works Director, or constructs roads in general, it's pavement preservation. There's a science to it. You pave a road, the road usually stays in good shape for a year or two. Once you start getting seam failures and shoulder failures, you have to address them promptly, because if you don't, your shoulders fail, your seams open up, water gets in them during the winter, the road deteriorates an awful lot faster. I can't do the pavement preservation. I don't have the budget or the manpower to do pavement preservation. And in the past three weeks, Mother Nature has just laughed at me. It's washed-out shoulders, it's washed-out gravel, it's got trenches down the ends of roadways. Have I mentioned I have no people? Have I? Just want to make sure. So I don't, I don't have a solution. I'm not, I wish I could stand here and tell you guys, this is what we got to do for a solution. The only solution is more funding. How you guys get the funding, I don't know. I don't.
No, and like, when you're standing there saying about people too, so Mike can stand there and also tell you that the people that he needs to hire aren't just somebody that's like a flagger, he needs to hire somebody that's qualified, that can run heavy machinery, which requires certain licenses, which brings on a certain amount of pay, not just your base pay, you're talking, for a professional truck driver, a heavy equipment operator, you're talking 30 or more dollars an hour for that type of position with somebody with those licenses that are qualified to do that. So, again, part of his budget that he's lapsing, because that's why this town has not been able to even get summer help for Mike to help out, because he doesn't have the money in his budget to be able to afford to pay anybody just to do the, excuse me, to do that, which is really sad.
Well, I actually do have funding in there, if we could hire summer help, but that summer help payroll was at $15 an hour.
Right.
Here's the kicker. Nobody answered the ad.
Really? So surprised.
Are you? Because I wasn't.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, I'm going to sum it up here in a minute. Here's, here's a weekly schedule for Ronnie, right? And he's by himself. And this is conservative. One day a week, he has to do trash pickup around town. The trash everybody throws out of the cars on the side of the road.
Sure.
So we don't look like, oh, I don't know.
Don't name another town, just, yeah, we get it.
Can I name a state?
South of us.
Well, southwest.
Sure, we know that state.
I completely understand that.
All right. And then two days, this time of the year, he does roadside mowing, because it's like the Congo out there.
Oh, yeah.
Roadside mowing, sight distance, can't see out of your droves, you can't see, so two days a week he does that. One day a week, he does drainage, cleaning, and beaver fighting, because that's all we do is fight with beavers out there. And they have a lot more energy than we do. They don't tire.
Yeah, they do, no. Very, very persistent.
They got big families, because they just bring in more people. We can't bring in more people.
By the way, if you've ever seen beavers at work, if we could hire a couple of those...
I'd be pretty happy.
We could train them to do some of these tasks.
It would be, it would be nice.
It would be nice.
And then shoulder repair, general summer maintenance, he does one day a week on that. But he's by himself. I mean, I'll come in town and do the bigger projects, we got, you know, we're getting paving and stuff like that, because I don't have the funding to bring in more people back to the $30 an hour.
Yep.
To work with Ronnie. But we're to the critical stage now. Ronnie was working on Thornel two weeks ago, Thornel Road. He almost got hit twice. Legitimately, almost got hit twice. But I, you know, so I actually talked to the chief that Friday after it happened. One almost happened, I think back-to-back, one was Wednesday, one was Thursday. I heard about it, I grabbed the chief. I said, "Chief, I got to be honest with you, I got to look out for the well-being of a town employee. I'm going to put a detail, a paid police detail with him, so he can work." I don't know what else to do. Now, the paid police detail is going to be north of 70?
88.
88? $88 an hour.
So you say it's $15 an hour is your budget. What's the total number?
Of the salary line item?
The hell?
$75,000.
So you got Ronnie's salary, right?
Yeah. And there was a salary always in there for a part-timer.
So do you have enough to up it to 20 for the summer? You know what I mean? At this point, if you, you haven't hired anybody yet, right? So as time goes by, you can increase that pay, because you, that's what I'm saying, I guess.
Yeah, I think I could. I think, because it's just a mathematical equation, right?
Right, and still be within line.
Yeah, I mean, if I take it for 15 and put it to 20, then the 30 hours become 22 hours.
I get it. But I'm just saying, maybe we do that. Maybe you up it to 20.
Listen, I'm fine with that.
And you know that I'm for you getting another guy. I mean, I'm not stupid, I know you need it, you know?
Desperately need it.
Yeah, so that's what I guess I'm trying to say, is if we can make that work, I would up it to 20.
Sure.
And put it out there at $20 an hour.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. We'll make the math work.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it's your budget in the end, you know? Because I would be in favor of that, getting, if that's going to help him get somebody and stick somebody with Ronnie when Ronnie's doing the stuff that needs a flagger there, you know?
Just schedule it so we can have somebody there two days a week.
Exactly. Like, these two days, you're standing there holding the flag, making sure nobody hits this guy, you know, that type of thing, and whatever, but if that's going to help you, I mean, let's do that.
Okay. So we'll bump the ad up to 20, 20 bucks an hour, see if that...
Somebody nibbles on that. And one of the other things that I put out, I talked with Mike, asking him about money as he was talking about the roads, was one of the other solutions that I was kind of thinking about was to, this coming year, to put in the warrant, what fund is it? The, not the building fund, the other big fund that, for the town.
You're talking about the general fund?
The general fund, that, you're right, that the town has to approve, is to, I'm not quite sure where we're at with that, but was to withdraw about a quarter of a million dollars to take that as a warrant, so that Mike would be able to use that money and apply it to fixing some of these roads that are in desperate repair of need. And Mike looked at me, and I said to him, I said, "So Mike, how many roads does that get us?" And he smiled, and he said, "Hmm, maybe three."
But it's non-lapsing.
Yeah.
And it's interest-bearing, right? And it's something we could add to over the years, you know?
So...
I'll, I'll take, the Highway Department will take whatever we can get.
Yep.
Because, again, I did a rough overview of funds. I don't think we got to kick that can around too much more, it's pretty fundamental math.
Well, I'm for improving your budget to begin with, period, and then that, like I said, that quarter of a million dollars was to, in the warrant, was to kickstart, like you said, to get some of those F roads repaired, so that you can get onto the D, and then we can at least keep the roads that become in disrepair to a minimum, maybe they don't get any worse than a C, that as you can progress down that list as they keep coming up, so...
I think the moral of the story is with all this stuff, is you get what you pay for.
That's it.
So, you know, if, I actually think, and this goes for probably all the departments in town, we do a really good job under the constraints the voters give us, but we could be doing a lot more, but people told us not to do anymore. That's what they told us in March, is they told us, don't do anymore. So the next time you hear somebody say, "Oh, my road, my road's awful," it's like, sorry, you probably told us not to do it.
Well, and truthfully, what's happened is, for the longest time, like Matt just said, the departments have been doing the best they can with what limited funds they've had, and at some point, when Peter has been robbing Paul, and it's time to pay the piper, this is what happens, and by not doing things when they should have been done, having the money in place to take care of the infrastructure, now this is why it's costing so much more to do it now and going forward, because of, you know, COVID, the inflation, all that hit, it became the perfect storm, the new police cruisers, everything, the fire department with their stuff, all these things have gone up in cost. And that's why when we kept saying, when we came out with the budget, that we seriously need this money for the town, and it's not like we're trying to break them, but we also need to start working with the school board. And the other thing with that is that we need to look at with the town that's coming up, that I've been doing some investigating in, is that the last payment for that high school is paid this coming, no, next August. That's a $2 million a year payment. So I would like to know what the school department seems to think they're going to do with that, and hopefully that that would end up lowering and coming out of their default, so that we can get a little bit better of a tax break, so that we can start to get some money for our town to be able to use it to do what we need to do. So we need to start having some talks with the school also, to find out where we're going to be financially, so that we can start putting some figures together and working with all this. So I'm just putting all this out there now for everybody, so they can start talking about it and getting upset and lining up and doing whatever it is they do, but like Mike said, at some point, we have to sit down and we have to start doing something. We can't just be ostriches and stick our heads in the sand and do nothing.
Well, we can't do, we can't do nothing.
That's it.
And listen, the cycle, and it is a cycle, it's a vicious... And listen, the cycle, and it is a cycle, it's a vicious cycle. So I'm talking just highway, not to get drifting off to different departments. We have the voters, the registered voters, the taxpayers in town that request, because they don't get a lot from the town. We don't, we don't provide a lot of services to the town, right, basics. But they'll call the highway department and request something to be done, whatever that something is. Their hopes are that that something will get done. Through this whole rendition I gave you guys. And it's frustrating for me, truly is frustrating for me. We can't get to do it. So now you've got taxpayers in town that are requesting something to be done. And it's putting a bad taste in their mouth, to be honest with you.
Yep.
Right? They pay a lot in taxes. We're not gonna argue that with anybody here, 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 here. The taxes in Newton are high. You hit the nail on the head. If they break it down, they know where most of the tax money goes. You said it a few minutes ago, school system. But if we can't provide some of the services, they're gonna be reluctant to give us something. So the cycle is like, it's this. That's why we voted you guys in, fix it.
We're working on it, Mike.
That's it for me.
So.
Mike, still leave it.
Mr. Sunshine here, I appreciate that.
Oh, the intermission? Oh, yeah.
I just want to make an observation.
Yep.
If you put a road bond article on the warrant, the decision goes to the community. They don't vote for it, they don't get it. It's not a decision of six people, you six.
Okay.
For a road, I mean, that's the fairest way to do it. You want your road fixed?
Yep.
Give us the money. And we should be asking for millions.
Yeah.
Over 20 years, it's not gonna hurt that much. The last thing I want to do is, I'm gonna tee you up, Mike. Could you explain to the community, because I was fascinated when I heard this 20 years ago, the difference between a snowstorm that's three inches and 18 inches?
I'd rather have the 18-inch storm.
Yeah, right.
The three-inch storms, which is what we've been getting the past couple of years. There are three-inch storm with rain. There's no accumulation. It's the ice and the rain, and we gotta go out and treat and re-treat and re-treat and re-treat. You get an 18-inch snowstorm, we'll plow it, maybe treat occasionally lightly in the middle of the storm. So to keep it brackish, so it doesn't cling to the road. But you plow it, you get done, you treat it once, and you leave. The big storms are not that bad to deal with. The little storms are the killers. And the little storms are more detrimental to the road surface.
Yep.
Water is not a friend of roads, any road. It's what gets in it, what breaks it up, or what starts to deteriorate. It's, yeah, it's, the big storms really don't have any problem with a big storm.
Anything else?
We press on, you know? It's all we can do.
Two last things, chief's hit me with it. Would you re-put up on the webpage or whatever we gotta do? And I don't know what happened, it's above my pay grade. The answering machine, that line that goes to the highway department, doesn't go to the highway department. If they pick up the phone and they go click, 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 and hit, I think it's nine? It shuts down the answering machine. It's been this for two months. It should have been posted, and I think it was posted, Diane. Diane did post it. Thank you for reminding me that too, because I have, listen, I don't need any more help in my world on residents being pissed off at me.
Do you want us to, when they hit nine, we could direct it to the fire department?
That would be excellent, fire department would be perfect.
Exactly.
Do the guys up there can answer the question.
Exactly.
You know, rather than put it on the website and announce that it's broken, why don't we fix it?
Again, above my pay grade.
Why is it like that? That's the question I have.
I thought that was supposed to be getting repaired.
In the one prior, and I lose track of when and how and how we did get here. The one prior used to go through some automation where it would actually send me an email. So I could pull it up on my phone. Again, the highway department at 8 Merrimack Road, there's nobody up there. There's nobody up there. At 8 Merrimack Road. The one guy's out working on the roads during the day.
Do you want me to explain what's going on?
Thank you, Diane.
So we upgraded the network system in the town hall. The town hall has a old, from like 2009, own system. That system no longer can talk correctly to the new network infrastructure we installed. The, every time someone calls and hits the highway department, it crashes the phone system. The only thing we can do is to either upgrade the phone system to something newer. Or maybe look at going at Comcast like we did with the police department. Again, that's expensive. You're looking at, just for the police, we pay $500 a month for all the service. That includes voicemail, a whole bunch of telephone numbers, and, you know, different things. They have phones and everything.
Can I, I'm sorry, Diane, can I make a suggestion here? We all agree we want it fixed, right? But let's not make this the meeting to fix it. Like, so can we table this for offline conversation? Because this is, this is the type of thing I don't want us to do on cable TV. Is discuss the details about why something doesn't work. We all, we all agree we want it fixed, right? So we can do that offline.
I think we need to get it fixed, the public safety thing. We need to get it fixed.
Oh, yeah, so if we could just, if we could get the, Diane, if we could get those options put in front of us so that we could be able to take a look at them? To see what we're up against, that would be good.
I will talk with Jim and Robin about the possible options they could have.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then that way there, we'll be able to make a better-informed decision.
Yeah, the public doesn't have to drown in the details.
Yeah, I mean, that, the technical part of that, I wanted to bring it up because I'm getting.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody.
No, I'm not getting back to anybody. I'm not getting back to anybody because I don't know they're going.
Now we know the reason why, like I got a phone call the other day and it said, "Why won't the road agent get back to me?" Now I know why, because he never got.
Not because I don't want him.
Do you have any other good news, or can you just?
You did say two things.
Say what?
You did say two more things, and that was one.
What was the other one? Oh, it was, and final, because I started at the beginning, I knew I'd work back around this. I said at some point in time, the highway department is gonna be a stand kind of independent department like other Plasto Kingston. That's a huge growing pain. But it has to happen at some point in time. Give you an example. An international six-wheeler, wing, main plow, integral sander or sliding sander, it really doesn't matter. They're right now, Plasto, I think Plasto just got one. They're $247,000 for one. Then you need a loader. Then you need a backhoe. And you really need two of the big trucks. Again, we have 52 miles of road here. And you need a couple little trucks. And the real thing to this is, you need people to put in every one of those trucks. But you have to start.
Somewhere.
Yeah, you have to start the cycle on going in that direction. You know, I know this, and you guys aren't that, but I know there's people in town that sometimes look at what they pay my company to supply the equipment to this town. Believe me, folks.
Can't buy it.
There's no money in that. Between breakdowns and fuels and insurance and upkeep and all the rest of the stuff that goes with it. There isn't. I mean, I'm still doing it, but someday I'll say, yeah, this has been fun, but fun's over.
Been fun, but it hasn't been real fun.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, that was the last thing I wanted to bring up. Because that has to not keep getting pushed down. It's gonna have to be addressed in some type of, you know, staged fashion. That's it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Chief, he's got it all warmed up, ready for you.
Good evening. At least one thing, at least you and I just learned, that explains why we're getting phone calls at 2:30 in the morning saying that the fire alarms are going down.
You got the problem too.
At both of them. So that could explain why we're getting the phone calls at 2:30 in the morning. Which we don't answer, by the way. I'm not sure which, there's a few things for the fire department, ranging from real minor to something major. I don't know what the board wants to deal with first, if you just wanna, just stop.
Go for it.
Beautiful. All right, I, to make a long story short, I've been saying for many, many years that the town is, has a third-party ambulance service. That does the EMS for the town of Newton. That private ambulance company does six communities, surround the communities. And I've been saying for years, sooner or later, they're gonna ask to be subsidized. A year ago, they approached the towns and said, "The contract ends February 28th, 2024." They want money. The funds they're asking for is bouncing all around. The original offer was $300,000 for six communities, divided up by percentages. Automatically, one of those communities, since we're in a public meeting, I will not mention the name, is out. They're gonna do their own EMS, they have the staff, and they're gonna hire some more staff and be fire and EMS-based. We had a meeting today with the five other communities. And the number that was given was for two trucks, exactly what Newton has today. It would be between $600,000 and $700,000. The great wisdom of other individuals, instead of dividing it up by the percentage, they decided to divide it up equally. So depending on, I was supposed to get an email from the third-party company with an exact amount. Newton could be looking at anywhere between $125,000 and $175,000 for the first year. They will give a year-to-year contract. With that said, well, the board's gonna have to, if the board chooses to do that. To stay with a third party, you can stay with a third party. We approached one third party and they were into the justice service, Newton. One truck for the town of Newton was around $1 million. We had an individual approach another private company. They won't even touch Newton by itself, there's no money. Okay? That figure of 600 to 700 could change tomorrow. There's, out of the five that are remaining, there's four little guys and one big guy on the block. That one big guy on the block is seriously thinking about doing it themselves. So if they do it, the cookie's gonna crumble. February 28th, 2024, there is no EMS. We are a call department. We are the only one that does not have staffing after 4 o'clock, either per diems, full-time, or stipends. A compensation in any shape or form. That's why I've been saying for years, if you have a fire, you have an emergency, medical emergency, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. Okay? I can tell you, this year alone, compared to last year on EMS for the town of Newton. Last year, the exact same time, exact same dates, there was 100 EMS calls. As of today, 8 o'clock in the morning, there was 147 calls for the town of Newton. So the board, I will have better numbers for the board, and the board will have to decide if they want to stay with third-party or have the fire department provide EMS service and fire. If you choose to do the fire department, I can stand here right now and tell you it's gonna be more money. The only difference is, not only are you gonna get an EMS personnel, you're gonna get a firefighter. They're dual-sir, so they'll be able to respond 24/7, 365 to a fire, and the same thing. The call force would be secondary. They'd come in for the second calls, et cetera. The main reason I'm here is depending on, either way, whichever way the board wants to go. We need to think about replacing the ambulance. A prior selectman did his due diligence and talked to different manufacturers. Newton has an opportunity to purchase an ambulance. That would cost zero money to the taxpayers in a default budget. The funds would come out of, 100%, come out of the fire department's capital reserve for apparatus account and the EOC funds. I can, the price of the vehicle is $209,000. That is delivered to the door. I can also tell you that one of the other departments ordered a new ambulance a year ago. They were hoping to get it this year, they were informed, not gonna see it. They have increased the cost for $50,000 from the original price, not even the ambulance they wanted. But they need an ambulance because come February 28th, 2024, there is no more EMS service. As of today, you are looking anywhere from three to three and a half years if you ordered a new ambulance today. So I would strongly recommend to the board of selectmen that the board of selectmen authorize the fire chief through, with the town administrator. After we look at this vehicle, if this will suit the needs of the town of Newton, to have the chairman sign and purchase this vehicle. I can tell you right now, and I keep on saying, February 28th, 2024. The current ambulance we have, please do not think we're gonna run an EMS service, base service, without ambulance. I stood up here four years ago, when it was going out on a wrecker. And asked to purchase one back then. So just like the road agent, we're just spinning our wheels here. Okay? Don't want to scare anyone, I'm just saying, those that have been transported by the private ambulance, they can come in front, in a public meeting and speak to the board of selectmen on how happy or how disliked they are.
So what are you gonna go look at this to make sure that?
They, yes.
So while you're doing that, why don't you get the paperwork done up?
The paperwork is sitting right here.
Okay, stipulating that the funds are coming from that account? What the dollar, what the dollar amount is gonna be, so that the board will have that to be able to look at. And then by doing that, then the board can approve it and then make the recommendation for me to sign.
So here. The biggest thing is, what I'm trying to get at is, time is of the essence. We can't put it on the shelf. This vehicle is set to be in the end of the month, the first week of July. If Newton, they need to know if Newton is serious. If Newton's not serious, it's already sold.
Well, that's why I'm saying, chief, we need to get all this done.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we allow the police chief and the town administrator to, or the fire chief rather than the town administrator, to move forward with this. Where it's not gonna be costing the taxpayers any money, and it's coming out of, out of capital reserve and out of the EOC fund. To move ahead and get this done, so at least we know we have that piece of the puzzle straightened out.
So I'll second for discussion, and I'll, I'll say right off the bat, and the chief knows where I'm gonna come with this. Because I understand the urgency, I understand what we're up against. But I've said this before in here, I need the business case, I need the full data. Because we're talking about buying an ambulance. Are we just replacing the ambulance? What's the full cost to do this?
That is the full cost.
That's the full cost of an ambulance.
That is for the full cost, right there, the ambulance.
For an ambulance?
For the ambulance.
We're gonna change the way we do business now, right?
No, we're not.
Well, it sounds like we are, we're not gonna have. We're not going to have...
That is a decision for the board of selectmen to make. Either way, the town needs a new ambulance. We're running a fire engine, by the way, it's going to be sent... The brand-new one's going to be sent out of service again. We're running a fire engine, so we don't run so much on that ambulance. If the board chooses that the fire department will run EMS, we need two ambulances. One's primary, one is going to be secondary. There is no plan on getting rid, trading in, selling the old ambulance. The funds to stock that ambulance with medical equipment is already in the budget, in the current medical line that we have, and also in the EMS revolving fund for all the transports we've done. So the funds are already there for that vehicle. What I am afraid, standing here right now, is that... No disrespect to anybody, we're going to keep on putting it on the shelf, and then February 28th, I can already tell you... You can ask any one of the six fire chiefs. The third-party company has already checked out. Newton has transported more in 2023 than we did the entire 2022. They have checked out. Once they know that the communities don't want them, they've already said, "Don't call us," we have... They're going to start planning the exit strategy. So if come tomorrow, the last Mohegan, which is the second-biggest community, says we're doing EMS, no one knows how long that private ambulance company is going to serve the communities.
So with all, you know, with all due respect, this is the type of thing I dislike, okay? Because I realize the urgency, but we make everybody else by Thursday? Is it Thursday? In terms of something gets on the agenda and the information we need to review is by Thursday?
We do make exceptions.
Absolutely. I know we make exceptions, but the reason we do that is so we have time to review it, okay? And we don't make any hasty decisions, and somebody's going to have a comeback, and they're going to say, "This is life safety. I understand." But I don't think there's many people who enjoy having something dropped in front of them of this much. And we've got to decide now, because we don't want to lose it, right?
The board has to decide if they want to pursue this avenue. The board does... It'd be great if the board would say, "Yes, we're going to buy it." I need to know the intention of the board of selectmen. If the board of selectmen says, "No, we're going to wait a month," I can... I'll stand up here, tell you, shred that, throw it out, have a good day. Unfortunately, especially for you, Matt, you have had board members that have been to these meetings. This has been going on for a while, and I guarantee you, knowing the select board, nothing came back to the board. So in all honesty, the only surprise that should be is to Bob, Dan, Joe, and Mike. That should be the only surprise, because they weren't here four years ago when... And like I said, I had a selectman have us write a grant last year for our new ambulance. And if we didn't get the ambulance, we were going to purchase an ambulance. So I agree. I understand what you're saying, Matt, believe me. Unfortunately, time is ticking. I agree with you 100%. Time is ticking. Board of selectmen has to make a decision, and if you read my newsletter that I sent the board, I said you have 60 days.
Listen.
I said you have 60 days to make a decision on what you want to do for EMS for the town of Newton. That's not my decision. I know my decision. I know if it was my family, which way I would go, and I've said this for years. When somebody can tell me how much a life is worth, then I'll agree with it.
Chief, in your defense, I have to say that I've been on the other side of the table over here for several years, listening to you preach, you know, not preach, but just tell the board exactly what's coming up down the road. And I've also been around you when you told me that you've had to wait for very long minutes for outside assistance to come in while our ambulance has been out, and then outsend the right people. And I don't know how many times we have to hear it. We know this is a situation. If we don't do this within a short period of time, it's gone.
It's gone.
Because there are other towns that are out there saying, "I'll take it."
It's already... I don't want to force nobody. It's already taken. That is sitting on that table because of an ex-selectman who talked to the vice president over a year ago. Okay? I just happened to reach out to them and ask, "Hey, what's the chances?" I was looking for a used ambulance. Used ambulance is more expensive than that. Is that the ideal? No, it's not. But I hate to say this, because I'm the one at 2 o'clock in the morning. Newton geographically is a long way from Atkinson and from Hampstead.
Exactly.
And when you're the one that dials 911 and you have an emergency, you want to wait those minutes? Again, it's not my decision, as Matt put it. It's the taxpayers' decision. If the residents want to wait 22 minutes when they're having a heart attack for a third-party ambulance to come in, God bless them.
Well, the other thing, Chief, is, once again, you've been thinking outside the box, like some of the other department heads, where this money is coming from... That it won't be an impact to the taxpayers, that it's coming from the EOC money, and it's also coming from your capital reserve fund. So that's money that's already been allocated for, you know, for purchases like of this purpose.
And like I said, that might not work. I might be here next month to try to purchase a used one. I could... Unfortunately, again, we're in a public meeting, so I can't really say too much. I know which way this is going to turn. You've got a fire chief, not me, that put in for retirement for next year. He might go this year because of this EMS. Okay? This is going to hurt. This is going to hurt, and I said this before. Newton, out of those six communities, Newton is the only one that after 4:00 PM, there's nobody in that station, and there's nobody there on weekends. You are rolling the dice. I've been doing this since 1980. I'm a dinosaur. When I did it, the economy was great. I could work 40-hour job and live high on the hog. We have members of that department that are working three, four jobs. I have a couple that are working five jobs to pay mortgages. We advertised more than for a yard person. We didn't get anybody. We didn't get anybody. And I'm sure Chief Jewett, he's lucky he's got one. Nobody wants to do public safety. There was no training for two years because of COVID. We're so far... We're like 10 years behind. But again, that's not my decision. That's the five-year decision. What you want to do for the town of Newton and what's best for the residents, and forget the price tag. And I just need to know what the board wants to do with that. If the board wants to entertain it, fine. If you don't, I'll email them today and tell them, "Get rid of it."
When did you get that quote, Chief?
About 2 o'clock today.
So...
2 to 3 o'clock today.
So you...
And he knew.
That was five hours ago?
Correct. And that's why I said, it doesn't...
So we just...
He just need... I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, but Chief, you had it in your hands at 2 o'clock today, right?
I was also at meetings.
I know, but...
And I was holding off.
I'm probably going to... There's a motion on the floor. I'm probably going to vote yes, but does anybody not agree with me on this? It's like, we just...
So it's not... I'm not even hung up on the technicality. Here's my hangup.
It's not a technicality. It's...
I get it.
We're being asked to vote on something we just got.
We just saw.
Exactly.
And then, you know, Chief, you're still going to come back to... You don't have anybody to put in it.
Well, I have staff to... The difference between Newton... Hang on a second. If... It depends on how the board wants to do it.
That's what I'm saying, though. You don't... I would love to see a full plan. I haven't seen it. You can talk about past board members, and that's fine, but...
Correct.
I don't have a full plan right now. You're like, "Buy this."
No.
But my other one's just sitting there.
No.
Because I don't have anybody to run it.
You will see. Unfortunately, what you're dealing with tonight, I've been dealing with for over a year with EMS. Okay?
I know. I heard about the guy in Newton that had a broken leg, that they couldn't get anybody to help him, or it was hanging off of him.
So I've been... No, with this EMS change, I agree with you, Matt, 100%. I'm not the one that said, from the salesman, "I need an answer from you guys," or it goes to the next one. Okay? I've asked for that a while ago. It finally came in this afternoon. I was at EMS meetings.
Yeah.
I was doing inspections. I truly apologize on that. I'm not saying the board has to sign on the dotted line right now. All I'm saying is, I need to know what the board's intent. If the board would like to entertain it, yes, he'll hold it. If the board doesn't even want to entertain it, great, I don't have a problem with it. If the board chooses to staff the fire station, out of the six communities, we have the staffing if you want to go per diem 24/7. None of the others have the staffing.
Well, that's why I'm saying, Chief, you go look at it. Make sure it's what you need and what you want, and it's going to suffice.
That's fine.
And while you're doing that, make sure that the proper paperwork that can be put in front of us, that we can have to be able to review it while you're doing that, and then we can just simply go, "Yep, boom, signed, done deal."
That's fine. There's the proper paperwork. It even talks about deposits and everything you need. There's the proper paperwork. Now I have a goal. I will talk to the manufacturer tomorrow and tell them the board is interested. We need to look at it first before the board makes a decision.
Yep.
And that's what I said at the beginning.
Yep.
I said at the beginning, depending on the fire chief and the town administrator looking at it and making sure it's right for the town. I said that at the beginning.
Yep, I know you did.
We're buying it today.
And that's why I started to say to you at the very beginning, "Go look at it and make sure it's what we want."
But I think the motion was, right, Joe, was to buy it.
Well, I can amend the motion to...
What do they need for a deposit? Because I didn't see it in here.
They just... The town has done enough business. We just purchased a new fire truck from them. They will take the board of selectmen's word that they are interested in the vehicle.
I mean, I am interested. You heard me, though. I'd like to see... This is what we're going to do going forward, and this is your, Chief, recommendation of how we're going to run this going forward, because I totally understand what's going to happen, and I'm good with that. I'm fine with expressing interest in this vehicle and you coming to me with the plan of, "These guys are going to do this. We're going to have people on 24/7. We're going to have our own ambulance. We don't have to call out anymore." You've got my support 100%.
So, Joe, I'm going to ask you if you'll withdraw your...
I'd like to withdraw my motion and amend it to allow the... I don't know how we want to say it or whatever it is. How do we want to word it?
The... Well, to allow the chief to continue negotiations.
Allow the chief to continue...
Negotiations with the vehicle.
Due diligence on the ambulance.
Yep.
Come back with us.
The deputy was supposed to give you, but I didn't want to come in here blindside. The board of selectmen with all the numbers. He's working all the numbers on what it's going to cost.
That's great.
Unfortunately, again, we went from $50,000 two weeks ago to a possible $150,000 today.
Yeah, right.
So the other departments have to make a decision before I start doing...
So we have a motion by Joe to pursue it.
Yep.
Seconded by Matt.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye, for sure.
Pause in your court.
That's it. I just have the other things later in the agenda. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, so I'm clear. I get the sense that the board wants to see the entire picture, the entire plan, the entire fiscal impact, including staffing and how many hours those staff will work, not just a piece of equipment.
Yeah, the example I would give in previous boards, we talked, and Mike mentioned it tonight, about taking over landscaping, so we don't sub out landscaping. If we did that, and I'm not saying we should, if we did that, that's not just buying a lawnmower.
No.
There's other costs, there's staffing, there's, you know, do you give them benefits? It's all this stuff. And I know somebody, I'm sure, is going to say, "Hey, you know, this is life safety. These things don't come around every day. We have to do this quick because, you know, February 2024 is coming up." But I'm just saying, as somebody who's been sitting there, I hate it when we do things this way. I hate it when we do things with, you know, the last-minute information, no notice. I've been asking for years. It should be very simple. All of this stuff exists. It's just a matter of putting it together and putting it in front of us.
Yes.
Marcella Vincent, 30 Thornell Road. I have a couple of questions with regards to this ambulance. First of all, is the ambulance we currently have not adequate to do the job that's necessary in this town? Number one. Number two, if we purchase this new ambulance, is it going to be a Cadillac, like the truck we just bought, that had to have monogram seats in it? We are a small community. We have problems paying for what we need to get done around here. If we need another ambulance in order to supply the service we need for the community, do we have to have the Cadillac version? Can we keep it to a minimal what we need to service the people of this community, so the taxes that are needed to do other things in the town will get done? I understand the money is not coming from... It's coming from a specific budget. But next year, when the budget is going to be voted on again, will that money be impacted because of it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent questions. Thank you. One, just to clear up a quick thing, the fire truck that the town purchased is not a Cadillac. An average fire truck is anywhere between $600 and $1 million. That one was $629. Okay? So it's not a Cadillac. I could tell you, the grant that we wrote for an ambulance was almost $400,000. I can stand here today and say, "That's not a Cadillac. That is the base price. That is your..." I was going to say Hyundai, but Hyundai makes a good vehicle compared to a Cadillac. That is not that. Until February 28th of next year, that's going to run the same way the current ambulance is running, with the individuals during the day, no cost. It's already been in the budget since 2016 to have staff in the fire station. So there's no cost there. And the call members are going to respond with it at night if the third-party ambulance isn't here. Again, been in the budget way before my time. So the staffing is... The only thing that's going to change with the staffing is if the town chooses to go 24/7. That's the only thing that's going to change with the staffing. Period. Forking it. Done. And that's because the board of selectmen chooses not to go with a third-party. If the board chooses to go with a third-party ambulance company, year-to-year, this is going to replace the one that is sitting there. Again, zero cost. Zero cost. We're holding on to the old one until we know which direction the board of selectmen want to go. If the board of selectmen want to go that the fire department runs EMS, then we need two ambulances. We get back-to-back calls. We need two ambulances. This is the backup call, backup truck vehicle, just like we have a backup fire truck when the first one is in service. If we don't do EMS, then the old one's going to go bye-bye, and you're going to stay this one.
Can I, if I may, with the chairman's prerogative, I would like to poll the board right now without... Obviously, we don't have the information. This is a non-binding vote. This is just to get everybody's headspace right now. Based on what we know so far, starting with Joe, would you be in favor of pursuing our own EMS? And this, again, this is non-binding. We're just... The chief is asking for our...
Based upon what I know right now, I think it's probably the prudent move.
What do you think, Dan?
Yeah, I'd probably be going towards that direction as well. It's... I hate subbing things out, so...
Yeah. Yep. Based on, I've had conversations with Chief, and when you lay out the figures to what the third party's going to request, what it would cost the town to do, and which would be... End up being more effective for the people in this community, like he said, versus having versus having a third party that's going to travel all the way from some other town to get here, to where we would have somebody in town to be able to respond within minutes, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, so I'm the, I'm the fourth one at least here tonight. We're missing a fifth, but I agree, that's where, I agree with the other three, that's where my headspace is at. So, I can't see the chief right now, but, so, so Chief, that's at le, like you said, it's non-binding, but you just got, the board of selectmen just told you where our...
A straw poll.
Our heads are at, and our mindset is, thank you, Trish, and that's the direction we're probably going to want to move in based on what we know so far.
I, I can tell you, that's my direction. I wouldn't want to wait, like I said.
Yeah.
It's just the way it is. You have more control, everybody works for the board of selectmen. The only difference is, that would hit the budget, because that we don't have the funds for. But you'd be able, John Kane can produce, if we did our own transports, total amount of transports, how much money it would generate to help offset the cost, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's not going to be as bad. Trust me when I tell you, it's not going to be $600,000, it's not going to be $500,000, it's not going to be $1 million.
Yep.
Understandable.
And a better service for the community.
At this point, I don't even know if you need to hear me, but I, this was originally going to be directed to you, Dan, to try to answer your question. So, but I think maybe the chief has just answered it. So, and, and Marcelle, too, to clarify, we have a current ambulance that is limping along and on a couple of occasions has been towed. Fortunately, we didn't have a patient in the ambulance, so it's one of those things where it's very scary. But our current staffing at the fire station can remain the same with this new ambulance. It just means, number one, we've got a reliable ambulance, and then if down the road, when you decide to see what happens with these other six communities and this third-party service company, if then you decided to do, to do some staffing, you can. But right now, this ambulance, if we can get it without this tax impact, which it looks like we can, it just means that we've got a reliable transportation for a rescue, we don't have to change anything we're doing at the fire station. So, budget-wise, planning-wise, it could stay the same. Down the road, it would be great to know that we've got a five-to-six-minute response as opposed to currently our average response for the third party, waiting for them is 18 to 28, 40 minutes sometimes. So, clearly, when you're watching somebody you love suffer, that time is really important. But this ambulance, if we do this now, nothing has to change with our payroll, with our status. It can down the road if you decide, or if, if this third-party company, you decide not to go down that road and do our own. We've already got a company that does our billing for our own transport, so that doesn't have to change. And again, we have to get creative with staffing, but we don't have to deal with that until you decide, and the benefit is, we then are bringing in revenue. So, are we going to replace all the revenue that we're going to spend in the beginning? Probably not. Inch by inch is a inch, yard by yard is very hard, but we'll get there. But just so that you know, nothing really, Dan, has to change right off the bat, other than that we've got a reliable life support vehicle that can respond. That's what I wanted to share.
Yep.
And our numbers, you know, I work numbers, I knew you were going to work, I knew Matt was going to want numbers. Our numbers, I went back three years, they've gone up, calls for service. Our EMS, everything has gone up, and the chief already said this year, we're at 147, and last year for the whole year, it was 216. So, we're already superseding last year's figures. The lift assists, last year we did 49, and this other third-party company says if you decide to go with them, by the way, we're not going to do those. So, we still have to staff our fire station to do lift assists, because this other third-party company, after they charge us X amount of $1,000, still isn't going to do all the work. So, there's other things there, but immediately right now, nothing has to change, just so that you know that, just so that you're comfortable with that. And, and to Matt, I get where you are about wanting to know ahead of time. I can tell you, the last three years in emergency management, I'm having a hot flash, it is hot in here, okay? The, one of the things that happened during COVID, just like the chief said, we were told, okay, this, he has this supply, this, 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 respond now or you're going to lose it. They gave us like no time, not even thinking that, we are a recall department, we're not always in there listening to their Homeland Security emails or webinars every damn morning. So, responding quickly has been frustrating. It's a curveball that I've had to learn to deal with, but I get where you're coming from.
Yeah, and...
Thanks.
And I, I don't want to belabor this, but, but we've had several examples in this room over the last few months where this sort of thing happened, and we had, we had somebody put it on the table, this, let's get this truck, you know, for, I'll, I'll say it, let's get this truck for the highway department. We're using existing funds, it's not going to change the way we do it, and we didn't do it because we didn't have any information, we got it last minute. So, I just want to keep some consistency. Hold on, hold on, not that, you've already spoken.
That did not come from the road agent.
And it did not come from the road agent. Let's just, yeah, we can do that, so. But, so, I can't, did we have a motion with a vote and everything? We did do that.
We did that.
That's done.
Yeah.
You can move on to the next thing.
Yes, so Trish, you want to come back up to the podium, please? We're going to do the ARPA update.
And I kind of thought, when Mike came up first, I thought he was going to be the controversial one, but it ended up being the fire chief. This is great.
Good thing fire department's here, I might have an asthma attack. We need to get some air on in here. Okay. All right, here we go. So, the ARPA report, so you probably already know, our molecule filters have been installed in the following locations, the selectmen's office, town administrator office, bookkeeper office, building department, town clerk, tax collector, planning board, both levels of the Gail Library, and upstairs here in this hall.
Please let me be Vanna White.
Yes. Ta-da. I've turned on the filters, there's one right behind Joe, there's another one over here. Whenever you have your meetings, you need to come in ahead of time and turn them on, or open windows, which CDC recommends, oh, thank you, did I tell you I love you? CDC recommends opening windows whenever possible instead of using filters. For a lot of reasons, fresh air is better, filters are going to cost us money, since we're talking about budgets. So, whenever possible, open windows. I'm saying that to everyone, every department head in TV land. As a reminder, also for the board of selectmen, but for the department heads that have these filters, not that I want to bring up budgets, but you are going to have to plan on about $100 a year for filters. So, that's something that we'll have to build into the budget, and I'll send a reminder to everybody.
We'll start a lemonade stand.
We'll start what?
A lemonade stand.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. I can do that. Pete can do it down the transfer station. The ARPA committee also is recommending to the board of selectmen, and you have, we've already brought this to you a couple of meetings ago, a request from the recreation committee, we're recommending to the board of selectmen to purchase four new park grills for the town beach, and one new grill for Granny Park, and one new 46-inch round picnic table for the town beach. The total cost, now initially, and Matt and Joe, you probably know this, so Rex sent us an invoice that only had two grills for the beach, and after the ARPA meeting yesterday, the input was, let's get all new grills. So, I did call the company today, and I, I said I really need an updated invoice. I know the prices would have been the same, but the shipping was going to be more because we were getting more grills. So, the total cost was $3,437.89. The company requires payment in full upfront, and ARPA committee recommends to the board of selectmen that we do this. I did fill out a requisition, requisition, and I attached the newest invoice. You can see it was an email that I just got late this afternoon, so I apologize for that. But I did bring it up a couple of meetings ago, so if you're okay with it, I know it's probably on your, is it on the requisitions for them to look at, Robin?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can deal with that. The other thing that ARPA committee unanimously voted to recommend to the board of selectmen to allow $36,032 to be taken from the ARPA funds towards the new police cruiser. This would result in no tax impact on the taxpayers. You already know that, because Chief Jewett brought that up already. We also discussed cameras at town beach, Granny Park, town hall, transfer station. Chief Jewett is working diligently on this. When we get some more information that we can finalize, we'll share with you. Some of the cameras that we have are broken down at the beach, some are, have to be completely replaced, but we'll give you all that information. We're thinking some of the cameras may still work, but the chief is working on that. The committee also discussed other ways to get revenue, again, trying to figure out, you know, the ARPA funds, we have a certain amount set aside, but what else can we do to make money? We actually talked about, you know, land auctions, is there land that we could sell? We talked about the transport ambulance, that, that could be a way to make a little revenue, and no tax burden to our residents. Finally, our, oh, that air is wonderful, thank you. Our EOC report, once again, I remind you, COVID is still here. As you know, I sent you all an email late one night, we're currently experiencing an outbreak in town in multiple areas. You need to be careful. I know the Fed said, oh, COVID is over. What they meant was, there's no more money, but COVID's still here, but they didn't say that part. So, I'm reminding you, if you're sick, please stay home. Our town clerk, tax collector said to remind you, renew your registrations online, pay your taxes online. It's easy, it's fast, saves on your gasoline, saves on your time, and as Mary Jo put it, it keeps you out of hair if you're sick. And the bottom line is, everybody stays safe. If you need COVID kits, I still have some. Please call me at the EOC office, which is 603-382-1610. If I don't answer, you can leave a message. If it's time-sensitive, call me on my cell. I unfortunately answer it all the time. I'm telling you, I'm going to hate putting this online. And again, I'm working on a few different grants for our town, infrastructure stuff, technology, so I'm hoping that we can keep dwiddle down, dwindling down on department head needs, and I'll keep you posted. Amen.
Thank you, Trish.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Chief, fire chief, you're up again, rate increase.
I, I brought forward to the board, increase for one of the lieutenants. Stipulation for his promotion was that he had to complete, well, let me phrase that, requirement for all officers, before they become an officer, they have to meet the national standard. He did complete his training, so that's why we're asking for the pay increase, to put him up to the level of a lieutenant. He is now, other than firefighter one, two, paramedic and everything else, fire instructor one, fire officer one, so he meets the designation of a fire lieutenant through the Nash, through the standard.
I would like to make a motion to increase firefighter medic Lieutenant Sean Kane's rate of pay from $21,85 to $24,95 effective June 18th, 2023. This change is the result of the lieutenant's recent completion of course of study of fire officer one NFPA 10212020 through the NH Fire Standards and Training Commission.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you. Alan Forman?
If he's watching TV, he might already...
I think he's working.
Oh, okay.
Well, then again, he might be on...
You have two requisitions?
Correct. I don't know which requisition the board wants to entertain first.
Get together, one after the other, so let it rip.
Oh, one of them is to start replacing the 20-plus-year-old radios that the town has been using, that were given to the town after 9/11 through a state grant. I've sent a letter to the board of selectmen a year ago, I sent it again this year about radio communication. This is to start replacing those obsolete, unreparable bricks that were given, I think, 20-plus years ago?
Yes.
I stand corrected, 20-plus years ago. The funds would come out of my budget.
So, I'd like to move to, move to approve the requisition, 1063 FD, to replace non-working portable radios provided by Beltronics Incorporated, the amount of $8,635, funds to come from fire department line item number 4220303. Second?
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous?
And also, that's on state bid. The second one is for a rescue sled. Lieutenant Kane is the one that's been working on this, so you're going to have to bear with me. It's designed to rescue downed firefighters and civilians to make it easier to carry them out of a hazardous situation. That requisition ended up being brought forward from the offices of the fire department, that they strongly recommend that the town purchase this rescue sled.
So, it's a sled? Because we have fast board lights.
That's it.
It's a sled, though?
I call it a sled. Again, he's the one...
Lights? I'm looking at it, and I'm like, what lights does he want?
And the reason, what the lights are, the little LED...
On the board?
I walked in when they were doing training, two little LED lights, so in a spooky condition, you can physically see the board.
So, there's lights on the board that you're buying?
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
The way it's worded, it looks like you're just buying some lights. I'm like...
It sounds like it's Kawasaki or something like that.
It's all good. It's all good. I'll move to approve the requis, requisition 1065 FD for fast board lights, provided the Fast Rescue Solutions LLC, in the amount of $2,850, funds to come from fire department line item 4220303.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye. And that was with the three quotes, not on the state bid.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. That's it.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You, too. Thanks, Chief. Energy gas contract.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, our contract with Hafner's expired on May 31st of this year. Given that situation, I thought it would be an ideal opportunity to approach the schools to see if we could piggyback on their volume of both propane and number-two heating oil. Trish, on behalf of me, went and approached them, they're more than happy to include us. They indicated that propane is pretty stable, but we should wait till the summer months before we lock in for a number-two heating oil. Because we don't know when that's going to happen, I'm asking for your permission to be your designate, to lock it in through the schools, where we're going to get the cost of, I don't know how many gallons they use, but we use quite a bit, too.
$40,000.
$40,000?
Yep. That's how much they buy at a time.
I'm pretty sure that we're going to get a, a big discount or break when we piggyback with them.
Yep.
And they've also indicated, as a side note, that they would be willing to do bulk purchasing of office supplies with us, so we could piggyback on them, too.
Sure.
They have recommended that we look at our cost and pass them on to them in their little comparison, to know whether or not we want to do it. But I'm looking for permission now to just be able to pull the trigger when the numbers come in.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
I would move to authorize the town administrator to sign contracts with the successful bidder propane and number-two fuel oil. On behalf of the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Meara will inform the board at a public meeting of the costs associated with the contract once the agreements have been signed.
Second?
Seconded by Dan.
For discussion purpose, I'd like to include diesel fuel to that as well.
Dan, you don't do diesel, do you? I mean, schools.
No, they don't do diesel. You're, I don't, we don't have any tanks, do we?
Why would you be looking at diesel?
We were told that they do diesel.
I don't think they do diesel.
Do any of the chiefs know if they do diesel?
Yeah, we have one diesel.
We do.
But I don't think the school's buying diesel. Diesel, the school's not storing, buying and storing diesel on-site.
Well, could we still look at it? Because we have, you know, we have, we run diesels in this...
Where are you getting your diesel now, Hafners? For the tank, chief?
Are they getting it at the local, local gas station? Are they getting it at the local, local gas station?
No, not in this tank.
Let me jump in for clarification.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. I think when they're saying diesel, Joe, you're talking diesel. The only thing the town has is generators.
Right.
That run diesel. So you can run the off-road fuel, home heating oil, you just can't run on-road. So the deal you're gonna cut with the town will work in that application. The diesel for the generators, you're fine with. It's not an on-road vehicle, so you're covered.
That would cover the tractor at the transfer station as well? The off-road?
Yeah, it actually should, because it's not an on-road piece of equipment.
Okay, very good.
Just anything that's on the road, you gotta pay the tax on.
Yeah.
So the motion's still standing?
Yup.
Yup. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous?
Hopefully, the school will, will not say, I don't even know who those guys are when Hafner's comes.
They won't. I'm on them. They're not gonna.
I wouldn't be shocked if they, Newton, we've never heard of them.
No, they won't.
Jim, could you address the, about what we're doing with the finance position and how we're switching that over, please?
Certainly. As your pain feeler aware, we have a bookkeeper that's no longer with us, spent a short amount of time. So we put another ad out, and we added the title Finance Specialist to have it be more attractive and to support a slight increase to be competitive. We were successful to have one interview, which the board met the person. Quite frankly, she would have been a home run, in my opinion. However, we were outbid, so to speak, by the town of Gilmington. Population under 4,000. Offered to pay more than us. So my suggestion at this point is the board makes some motions to eliminate the bookkeeper position and create a position called the Director of Finance and HR, because those functions do actually come out of that office. And we'd be able to be more attractive and hopefully have somebody that's already employed doing the same function walk in the door and help us.
With that said, then I'll make a motion to move to eliminate the position of bookkeeper.
Nope, nope. Separate motions. Just end that right there.
Okay, sorry.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dan. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
The next motion will be to create.
So I move to create the position of Director of Finance and Human Resources.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Before we leave the subject, I have sampled job descriptions here. I also have them electronically, so you can take the paper tonight if you want. I could send it to you tonight after the meeting, electronically.
Awesome.
And thank you.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. I think we were talking about, because of the Fourth of July, there not being any, and if we were gonna have another meeting, and I believe we talked about if there was going to be a need, that we might have to put in an emergency meeting in, that would be possible, but other than that, no, for the Fourth of July.
We just wanted to talk about that.
The next time you meet will be the 18th of July, unless we have a special meeting.
Unless we need to. That's fine. You'll just pull the board.
And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it an emergency meeting, right? That has a different definition. But yeah, if, if you start to see.
An unscheduled meeting, yes.
You start to see an agenda forming, July 5th, 6th, 7th, let us know, and we can come in here.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That's fine.
And other than that, we're good with that for now of the schedule?
Can I also get my birthday off?
No, you can't have your birthday off, Matt.
Okay, sorry.
You have to work like the rest of us.
All right, okay.
Abatements.
I'll blaster these.
Watch the sandal.
I move to grant an abatement in the amount of $688.75 for map in lot number 10-7-16 as recommended by the contract assessor.
I would second that.
Seconded by Joe.
And I have some comments.
Any discussion?
Discussion I have, I guess, is, I'd like to see the, the street address put on to those when they do them, because it's a matter of public record anyway. It just makes it easier for people who, if they're looking for like a, looking for where they're cutting lumber or something like that, rather than have a lot, they know where it is, if the conservation has to see it.
Is that, that's for timber tax, not for abatements?
Well, for any, any one of those. Timber tax.
Fire station? No?
No, it's a matter of public record.
It's a public record.
They just put the street address on it. It's, it's provided on the, on the forms anyway, so.
All right. Go forward, put it on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to grant an abatement in the amount of $840.27 for map in lot number 16-4-1-1A as recommended by the contract assessor.
Second?
We'll give Matt that one.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just to be clear, these two happen to be telephones or electronics or something like that, just so everybody's clear on what these ones were.
Somebody wanna make a motion for manifest?
So I would, I move to approve a vendor manifest in the amount of $1,441,015.51 dated June 23rd, 2023, noting that this manifest includes $1.3 million for the Sanborn Regional School District and $22,000 in ARPA costs.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Guide. All in favor? Aye.
I just said ARPA.
That's all right.
ARPA, that's all right.
There's an R in there.
That was unanimous. Next.
Starting to drop my Rs again. I, I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $5,157.29 from the Cable Revolving Fund, account number 391293. Payment is for Hewlett-Packard Financial Services invoice into Armon Networks totaling
Second?
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Anybody want the next one?
I'll keep going if Joe go hit it.
I move to approve a withdrawing amount of $1,681.44 on the Police Detail Special Account Number 244848. This is to reimburse the Police Department for budget monies paid to officers that work details.
Second?
Seconded by Dan. All in favor? Aye.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of $48,996.80 dated June 22nd, 2023, with a pay date of June 22nd, 2023. This manifest includes $581.37 in ARPA administrative costs.
Second?
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve and accept the public minutes dated June 6th, 2023 as written.
Second?
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained.
Would you like to state why you're abstaining?
I wasn't here.
Okay. You might have watched it on.
I can promise I didn't. Wow! I read the minutes.
Could you pull it, pull that out of my back, please?
Wait, wait, not for anything, but I was on the planning board prior, so the one piece that I would need to watch, I've already seen.
I not only participate in these meetings, I record them, so I can watch them over and over again.
All right. Do, 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 actions, new items, old business, selectmen goals and objectives.
If I, if I may, I went out there and I read what everybody put in there, and every, everything's good, but like we talked about last year when we did the goals, you need a measurable goal, right? Because, you know, truth and justice is great, right? We all want that, but you need something you can measure at the end of the year, so just, and I, I did this quick and dirty, so I'm gonna read this off and tell me what you guys think. First one being, update the current code of ethics policy, right? So all five of us would own that, but if you want, I can collect the inputs and put it out to everybody. The second one would be something we haven't had in a while. Establish a policy committee. And what we've done in the past is, we've had two board members on that committee, so you don't have a quorum, and they can go off and target three key policies, at least three key policies to update this year, so they'd mark those up, bring it back to the full board. Third one I had was, ensure delivery of the updated capital improvement plan for integration into the 2024 town warrant, so we could have one, one person like shepherd that, because I know it's been worked on, but there, some key people involved in that have left town. So, you know, where is it? We don't want to miss the second Tuesday in March, you know what I mean? We want to have something. And then the last one I had on there is I, I put the Boston Post Kane, which we haven't awarded that to anybody in probably three years, so we could have one member like research, because we wanted to go to kind of the right candidate, right? And, and then we can all make the final decision, but, so that's just quick and dirty, what I came up with.
No, I think those are all good.
So I have one that I didn't put on there. You guys have noticed the way I operate, like, I don't know how to quantify it, but streamline. We need to, there's some stuff that we're doing that, I think most of you agree, that we really don't need to be doing them. Like, for instance, when the fire chief just came up, and yes, chief, I did it when you came up, the step raises. When, when somebody gets a certain certification that's required by them being hired, the chief should not have to come in front of us and ask for us to give that duly awarded raise. It should go to the town administrator, and he can tell us in his update, or one of the chiefs can tell us in their employee update when they do it, and whenever we do. But I don't think that we need them. So, but anyways, that's just one example, but that type of stuff, like, you know, the, the alarm for the town hall, like, stuff like that, I don't want to hear about it, I just want it fixed.
It kind of like falls under policies and procedures and things.
And that's, and that's fine.
Like put on there, things that are seen and unseen.
Sure.
The thing that came up tonight is, I was really upset about the fact that we have a phone situation, where we're, we have so much going on.
Sure.
Why can't this get done?
Let's get it taken care of.
We had a situation at the transfer station, that the phone was out, and nobody knew about it. Just little things like that. I mean, these things should get done on a normal, and I know we're going through a lot of changes and stuff like that, but policies, procedures, seen and unseen, culture change, we need to, I agree with you.
So my only thing would be, I think we all agree in everything you just said, but in terms of making it a goal, how do we measure that? Because you, you've described something that could be this big, you know?
And that's what I meant. Like, I know I said that, it just needs to be.
So I think that would be.
Streamlined, but I mean, how do you measure that? I get it, you're gonna time our meetings, you know what I mean? Like, it, it's, and it's not even about the length of our meetings. It's about some of the, the stuff that's coming to us that really is, is stuff that should have been, should be done in-house anyways.
And I think under Jim's direction, I think we're, we're getting to a lot of that.
We are getting to that.
We're cutting out a lot of that minutia, and I think it's gonna make things, I think it's made things more productive already. In the short time that I've been up on the board, I see a great direction change from when I was sitting out there.
The, I'm sorry, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say that I believe some of that would fall under what you had talked about policies, updating that.
I was gonna say that, but what came to mind is, perhaps one of us should take on the goal of being the, it's kind of like the, the, well, almost a gatekeeper, but it's, it's the bureaucracy buster, you know what I mean? So if, if one of us turned around, I'm just using Bob as an example, you don't have to do this if you don't want to, but Bob could be the one, and could basically say, here's, you know, the suggestion box, or the, you know, the, some sort of repository, anybody in town can submit to Bob. Here's something I see as bureaucracy. Bob can collect those and come back to us, and we can have a hit list. So it's, the goal is to actually have that process of bureaucracy busting. Hopefully, at the end of the year, we have a lot of results against that goal, but it's not, it's not trying to fix everything at once, so just thinking off the top.
And I mean, and part of what Joe was saying, too, is because we did upgrades, right? Like Diane talked about, we didn't know what was going to end up happening with those other phone systems, how they were gonna shut down. So that's more or less, you learn as you go along, and now it's having to correct and fix those problems. So it's not something that's just.
Oh, Trish is coming. We've gone too long.
Can I just make a comment about the phones? What you didn't hear when it was being explained to us, the chief, Al Cadino, left, but Chief Jewett is still here, and Mike Paverro said, you know, we've been having randomly, in the middle of the night, like, 2:00 in the morning, the alarms are going off, and Mike Paverro said, you know, I wonder if that had something to do with the phone stuff. So it'd be very interesting, once you pursue what you have to do.
Right.
That could be why we're, they're going off in the middle of the night.
Exactly.
We're being called.
But that all said and done, don't we have a provider that provides that service if we have a problem?
Yeah, but I don't know how it's interwoven with the phone.
Well, that's what we need.
That's you guys.
To diagnose, I guess.
There was, there was a guy earlier tonight, who was sitting up here, who said, can we not, I mean, it's important.
I know.
You know what I'm saying? It's important, but it's, it's 8:05, and we're on cable TV.
We're not under a time, time crunch, so.
Real quick, chief.
There's an issue with the communicator with the radios that call out for the fire alarm system, central alarm, who the company that we use is working on it. So that should be rectified shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, so in terms of this list, does that make sense? So we have five of them?
Yep. I say we go forward with that list.
I'll send them to you.
And I just see that we could say that we should be able to add to this if something comes up that needs to be worked.
Yeah, it's, it's fluid.
It's fluid, yeah.
Like, one of the things that I like to put on there is communications. We sometimes have not-so-good communications between boards in this town.
Yeah, so, so you're absolutely right, but again, how do you quantify that? Because I, I could fix communication tomorrow, like this much, but to fix all of.
Okay, I'm gonna give you an example, and this just came up a couple of weeks ago. But let's just say the planning board gets a plan. I'd like to see the planning board be able to, to reach out to conservation, to the police, and the fire, and the road agent, to say, what do you think about this plan? So when someone comes in, they can say, well, this, 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 and this, we have concerns with, rather than getting it after the fact. That might eliminate some of the problems we have, like some of the Coleman problems we have.
So there are times where we've said, we haven't, or when I was on the board, we wouldn't approve it until the police chief came in and talked to us, the fire chief came in and talked to us. Like, there are times where we were like, this, we're not moving forward until we have one of the chiefs come in and speak to us about whether it be parking, whether it be calls, and how they're gonna get in there, or what have you. So that does happen.
And I like to see that on an ongoing basis. How can we do it so it's ongoing, so everybody's in the loop?
I mean, it's on a case-by-case basis at that point. Somebody's building a garage, it's not like.
Oh, no, something like that, but I mean, if there's a big project, there's a project right now going on down at T-Rex, that there, there is, you know, concerns about. And some of the boards, I think, would have liked to have known this in advance, as to what's going on. They're cutting, they're cutting timber down there. Did anybody get a permit?
Yeah, they did, as a matter of fact, Joe.
They did?